I would like to call this meeting to order. Will the secretary please call the roll?
Mrs. Becker.
Here.
Mr. Cummings.
Here.
Ms. Gwos.
Here.
Mrs. Herrick.
Here.
Mr. Hong.
Here.
Mrs. Reese.
Here.
President Lacks.
Here. We have a quorum, please rise to salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the rights of the public to have advanced notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies in which any business affecting their interests is discussed and acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the East Brunswick Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted at the East Brunswick Board of Education offices. Written notice was also provided to the Sentinel, the Newark Star-Ledger, the Home News Tribune, the Alternative Press of East Brunswick, and the Municipal Clerk of East Brunswick. All Board of Education meetings, with the exception of executive session discussions, are videotaped for later broadcast. It is the policy of the Board of Education that videotape meetings are not edited for any purpose. Individuals who speak at the Board's public meetings should be aware of these videotaping rules. Good evening. As we are in habit of doing, we're going to go right into our closed session, whereas the Board of Education must discuss matters which are not appropriate for discussion in a public meeting, and these subjects are within the exceptions to the Open Public Meetings Act and are permitted to be discussed in closed session. The Board of Education intends to discuss matters as follows, those items listed on tonight's agenda. The length of the closed session is estimated to be one hour, after which the public meeting of the Board shall reconvene and action will be taken. Now therefore be it resolved that the East Brunswick Board of Education recess into closed session for only the afferset subjects, and be it further resolved that the East Brunswick Board of Education hereby declares that its discussion of the afferset subjects will be made public at a time when the public's disclosure, interest in disclosure is greater than any privacy or governmental interest being protected from disclosure in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. Moved by Mrs. Becker.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Gwos. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Opposed.
Motion carries. Thank you so much. We will see you in an hour. Oh, good, Chris is here. All right, Chris, you made it at the buzzer. All right, welcome back, everybody. I'm going to start this evening with Dr. Valesky's superintendent's report, please.
Thank you, President Lacks. I want to start off with an explanation about why we're here tonight. East Brunswick Police Department is actually utilizing the JM PAC tonight, so it's an example of the relationship we have with the township and sharing services with them, so that's why we're all here. I also want to apologize that the projector in this facility broke this afternoon, so what you would typically see is video that would accompany my superintendent's report will not be played tonight. The artwork on display in the boardroom back at the administration building was created by students from East Brunswick High School. If you have the opportunity, I encourage you to stop by, it's great. The art teachers of these talented students are Megan Buckley, Lisa Gombas, Matilda Meto, Jeffrey Novak, Rachel Roman, Jonathan Shalaba, and Glenn Pazinko is the interim principal. Irwin Elementary School was this year's Tree City USA recipient from the East Brunswick Recreation Department. To celebrate the event, a special program was held outdoors at the school's gazebo on Friday, April 26th. Students sang songs and read poetry for many guests and dignitaries who attended. Most students participated in a post ricontos where they drew pictures depicting the importance of trees and conservancy in our world. Each student was provided a tree sapling, donated by Stop &amp; Shop to take home, and plant to commemorate the event. Nearly 100 Churchill Junior High School students were recognized for their hard work, kindness, and generosity at an annual celebration for the Butterfly Effect Kindness Project, which took place on Monday, April 29th. This project was started by English teachers Edith Weinstein and Kathy Merton during the 2021-2022 school year and has continued to grow and reach other schools in the district, such as Hughes, where 71 kindness projects were completed this year. Thanks to a partnership grant with the East Brunswick Education Foundation, students write a proposal for a kindness project and carry out their kindness initiative throughout the school year. Students have engaged in these projects that have helped the school and community, as well as local animal shelters, homeless shelters, and senior citizen homes, to name a few. In addition to the EBEF, which has helped to fund grants for student projects, the Churchill PTA and the East Brunswick Education Association have partnered to help recognize the efforts of our students to spread kindness and assistance to those that are in need. During the month of March, our school district took part in the Middlesex County replenish food drive. We had 100% participation from all 11 schools, including our administration building. East Brunswick Public Schools ranked among the top 12 schools across the country and will be recognized by the Board of County Commissioners. The East Brunswick Schools Outdoor Spring Walk at the Township Municipal Complex begins tomorrow, Friday, May 10th. This year, there was a decision to incorporate an opening evening where all families have been invited to join anytime from 6:30 to 7:30 p.m., and again, that's tomorrow night, Friday, May 10th. Many of the visual arts staff will be in attendance, and student music compositions will be streaming live through the speakers on the grounds. The Outdoor Spring Walk will be on display from Friday, May 10th through Friday, June 7th. And now, if you'll allow me, I'm going to make a few comments regarding some things that have been going on over the past two weeks. In my tenure as leader of East Brunswick Public Schools, I have remained steadfast in my commitment to fostering a positive and enriching learning environment for all students. And while social media can be a powerful tool for communication, it unfortunately has the potential to spread misinformation and misconceptions. It's important to recognize that misinformation on social media can sometimes arise from misunderstandings or complete misinformation. In such instances, I've always been open to engaging members of the community to provide clarity and address any concerns they may have. I take great care in making decisions that prioritize the well-being and success of our students, faculty, and staff. Every decision is made with a careful consideration, and major decisions are made in consultation with any number of Board committees and then the entire Board. The decisions I make and the recommendations I make to the Board of Education are always up for debate. My responsibility and authority under the laws of New Jersey is to make those difficult decisions. What we can no longer debate is the impact of the full application of the New Jersey Public School Funding Formula on our school district. So individuals have shared posts from social media with me, and I imagine they were precipitated by our budget forum followed by our budget hearing. There's a saying, "If you want to run with the big dogs, you need to get off the porch." Now I guess it's easier to pound weight a keyboard at home than it is to pick up the phone or have a face-to-face conversation. The true facts from every single thing that was posted that have been shared with me are available to the public, you have to look hard enough. They never make it to the public forum because it simply negates the intentional creation of chaos. And since the theme on most of the Facebook posts I saw were "Let's throw everything at the wall and see what sticks," I'll provide some factual clarity, but I must tell you, I'm completely disappointed to have to do this. Regarding security, the Director of Security reports to me. It's on an organizational chart that is part of a Board policy and is available for view on our district website. Regarding bonuses, I do not receive bonuses. Mr. Juliana does not receive bonuses. Mr. Crotchfeld does not receive bonuses. No one in our support operations receives bonuses. Regarding Mr. Juliana's title, the district is permitted to title the Business Administrator as an Assistant Superintendent. Mr. Juliana's title came with no pay increase. It was the Board's unanimous acknowledgement of his many contributions to the district. Regarding consulting, I'm stating from my contract, "To devote the Superintendent's full-time skills, labor, and attention to his employment during the term of this contract and further agrees not to undertake consultative work, speaking engagements, writing, lecturing, or other professional duties for compensation without written permission from the Board. I do not do contracting, and I do not consult. I do main in an active, limited liability corporation for what will be a future endeavor for me." Regarding statements that I work virtually a lot, my contract also states, "The Board recognizes that the demands of the Superintendent's position require him to be in attendance many irregular hours and occasionally may require that he attend district business outside of the district." I'm not asking for sympathy, I knew what I was getting into when I took this job. My workdays are consistently between 12 and 14 hours, and that doesn't include weekends. And I've had plenty of occasions over the last decade where I've taken a personal day, a sick day, a vacation day, and had to engage in work because of a situation in the district. So if you want to accuse me of working virtually when I log in, when I've actually taken time off, guilty as charged. Regarding that I misrepresented myself and I'm not a veteran, I am, United States Air Force, 1977 to 1981. So regarding all of our relationship, I'm not resigning. My current contract expires June 30th, 2027. Ultimately, I stand in my integrity. I know who I am. I'm really proud of the progress that we've made over the last 10 years, and I remain fully dedicated to serving the best interest of the entire East Brunswick community. I know as Superintendent, accountability ends with me. And my words tonight are not to change anyone's mind, it's to get on the public record. And I'm always available to intelligently discuss any issues. I simply ask the East Brunswick community to judge me on the totality of the decade of service I've already given to you, not on baseless accusations or assaults on my character. These social media marauders only have a voice if the greater community gives it to them. If a tree falls in the woods and there's no one there to hear it, does it really make a sound? Another school year is about to end, with so many student successes, we need to get back to celebrating them. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Valesky. And yesterday was one of those such days that you are too humble to say that you did have a day off and came in. I'm looking at you. Speaking of student successes, because I do like to stay on the positive side here, I'm going to ask my friend Chris, give us some, give us some good news, my friend.
Thank you.
From your building, we're in your home, Home Court Advantage, my love.
All right, good afternoon, everyone. First and foremost, I would like to take a moment to thank all the teachers in the district in honor of Teacher Appreciation Week. If any students are listening or in the audience, please make sure to give your teachers a compliment or a thank you for the hard work throughout the entire year. And while we're on that topic, I'd like to personally thank my chemistry teacher, Mr. Pike, for going above and beyond to prepare his class for the AP exam, and for Mr. Carney for agreeing to be our graduation speaker this year, which is no little task. And other than that, AP exams are well underway at the high school, starting on Monday and continuing through next week. And after AP exams, clubs and activities will begin to pick up their pace once again, with the East Brunswick Choir having their spring concert on the 16th and the band having their concert on the 22nd. East Brunswick High, East Brunswick High School's International Club will also be hosting their biggest event of the year, Collision, on May 17th, where students will dance and compete to claim the title of the best performing group. And East Brunswick High School's Student Council will be hosting their outdoor movie night on the 31st. So there's a lot that lies beyond the horizon for our high schoolers following exams.
An alumni can come to movie night, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, just making sure. Thank you so much. I'm going to miss these reports. I'm really glad to hear that, and I have to tell you, you are such a wonderful young man, and I have, in all my years, I don't think we've had a student rep, I don't know if anyone else can remember, that thought to thank the teachers for State of Appreciation, Teacher and Staff Appreciation Week. So I give you a lot of credit. Great job.
We can invite him back, he's going to be nearby.
That's true, Princeton's not far.
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 okay. You can run for the Board, Chris, there you go. All right, so it is now the time for the good of the cause for the public. The Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on school matters of community interest. To protect the privacy of all students and staff, concerns regarding individual students and staff members should generally be addressed by first meeting with the appropriate administrative staff. In order to permit the fair and orderly expression of such comment, the Board should provide a period for public comment at every meeting. The participant will be limited to three minutes duration, a lapse time will be determined through the use of a timing device operated by the Board Secretary. And I do always remind people, this is not a rule of the Board, this is the way that Board of Educations run their meetings, where we give you a public time to talk to the Board. You have up to three minutes, you may say, the microphone will be yours, it's right down here. When you come up, if you could please state your name and address for the record, and if there is something that does need follow-up, I don't see my friends in the audience, because I have no glasses, and, oh, they're waving. Please do leave your contact information, because we do take it very seriously and would like to get back to anyone that does need a reply. So that being said, who would like to be the first contestant this evening? Okay, sir, come on, almost down, and state your name and address for the record, please.
I came down a little bit.
A little bit?
Just a little bit.
Thank you.
My name is Butch Salzer, I live at 590 Route 18. First of all, before I get started, and I know I only have three minutes, Doc, I like you, I don't have a problem with you. I don't think it was necessary for you to say what you did, from what I've seen, and this is personal only, you've always been nice to me, so I just, I just wanted to say that. So I think one of the reasons, or the main reason that people are here tonight are to speak about Lou Figueroa and, and what he's done and what he means to the community. He was referred to in, or his position was referred to in a presentation two weeks ago as, actually, I don't even remember what he was referred to as, but to me, he's Lou Figueroa. So I'm going to refer to him as Lou Figueroa. Lou has a contract, he's supposed to do stuff, which he does. There are some things that he did above and beyond that I'd like to speak about, and I have to read this because it's the notes I was taking. And by the way, just so you all know, if anybody of you saw me hanging out in front of the Board of Education building every day from Monday through Friday last week, that was me, and I was there from 8:00 a.m. until 6:00 p.m. Lou worked with a staff member and her husband to help them get out of some outside, to get some outside resources for their son, who happens to also be an East Brunswick student, who desperately needed that help. Lou ran the Safety Committee for the district, which included the East Brunswick Police Department, the East Brunswick Fire Department, the Office of Emergency Management, from town and principals and staff from the district. Lou attended eight different security drills in several different schools within the time of about seven business days. He spent seven evenings coaching baseball, two teams, not one, two teams, with our township boys. Yesterday, after the little kerfuffle here at school, he met with the students involved in the altercation here at the high school, worked with building administrators, the Director of Security, the Police Department, and the Director of OEM to handle the problem and reestablish a safe environment. Might I ask how much time I have left?
12 seconds.
Bottom line, folks, what I'd like you to do, Lori, is I would like you to postpone the vote tonight, speak to the eight principals, and ask them what they would do without Dr. Figueroa. That's what I would like you to do, that's what I would ask.
Thank you, Mr. Salzer. You'll state your name and address, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Dominic Sclafani, I live at 2 Morgan Place, East Brunswick. I am truly speechless right now, as everyone here sat through a four-hour Board of Ed meeting where majority people talked about how great of a man Dr. Figueroa is, and you still arrived at the conclusion to cut him. Maybe it wasn't clear, but that man has saved the lives of numerous kids. In fact, the fight at the high school yesterday, he was there in 10 minutes, and I'll let you guess who wasn't. The fact that you have decided to cut the guy who truly cares about the well-being of the students says everything we need to know. The fact that you are keeping individuals who do not have teaching licenses or degrees over those who do says everything we need to know. The fact that you are voting on this during Teacher Appreciation Week tells us everything we need to know. You are prioritizing money over the students. I don't know a single school in the state or the country who has an Assistant Superintendent of Business Operations, especially one whose title was self-appointed. I don't know a single school in the state where you can obtain a college degree upon graduating, and you can thank Jamie Kennard for that. Board members, here is a petition of over 800 signatures and counting to support Dr. Lou Figueroa in two days. So I encourage you, please listen to the community and your constituents to vote no on this budget, to not only save Dr. Figueroa's job, but the lives of every single student that goes here.
Thank you, Mr. Sclafani. Does anyone else would like to speak to the Board this evening?
Hi, good evening. My name's Dr. Jamie Falco, I live at 11 Taft Place. I'm a lifetime resident, I went to Bammin Row Elementary, I graduated from the high school in 2001. What I remember in 2011, when my mother was laid off, last time this budget crisis happened in this town, we had symbolic gestures from leadership that meant a lot, negotiations with the NJEA and with the Principals Association in the state. It didn't make a big difference, but it made a difference to us as people. Another thing I'm a little confused by, because I can math, is what, what was global economy's inflation, like 6.8%? And we've estimated a 3% growth of health costs in an economy where health insurance costs more, where people take more sick time. I'm a little flustered, because like I work in healthcare, and I thought it was common knowledge that when you predict inflation, you want to match that in every facet of your business. I have a very successful business, I grow 10% a year, I grew through COVID, I paid my employees out of my own pocket because symbolic gestures matter. And I just want to thank the Board for my time. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Falco.
Hi, my name is Teresa Kaminkowitz. I'm one of the nurses at Hammershold Upper Elementary School. I've worked as a nurse in East Brunswick for just over 20 years. I've been an RN for 36 years. I love my job, and I'm a proud public servant. And thank you for your service, Dr. Valesky. I've seen more than my fair share of budget crises during my tenure as a school nurse, serving the students, staff, and families of this great district. To my recollection, newer positions are always the first ones eliminated. In my 20 years, this district has always had an Assistant Superintendent of Student Services. When the former Superintendent Joanne Magistro said she was faced with making difficult decisions, she said she would ask herself, "What is best for the students?" That answer made her decision a lot easier. Please consider my comments and rethink the move to eliminate the Assistant Superintendent of Student Services. Every child deserves a fair and appropriate education, it's the job of every department that makes up Student Services to afford every student the chance to succeed. As part of Student Services, we do all we can to educate our most vulnerable, most fragile, diverse, impaired students. Sometimes in assisting students and families, we make unpopular, difficult, and expensive decisions. Money allocated to educate students who require an IEP, a 504 plan, IHP, or an emergency health plan is money invested in our children and our future. Eliminating the longstanding position of Assistant Superintendent of Student Services will negatively impact our students in devastating ways. Unpopular and difficult decisions need to be made, and we rely on the Assistant Superintendent of Student Services to advocate for our departments when those decisions need to be made. Thank you, Dr. Figueroa, and for coming to our department meetings and coming to Fairview and knowing what we do in Student Services every day. Thank you for that.
Thank you, Mrs. Kaminkowitz.
Hi, my name's Tom Sclafani, I live at 2 Morgan Place here in East Brunswick. I've been doing a lot of listening, the last meeting I listened a lot, and I spoke to a lot of people since then, and just to one, Lou, I really want to thank you for the time you met with Dom and myself that one time there. It was amazing what this guy did for my son. And the other thing is, from just talking to a lot of people, and you'll see all the people who wrote on that petition, this man's the heart and soul of East Brunswick. Why would we want to let him go? Student Services, right now, where mental health is right now, you're about to let him go? I've been teaching for 30 years, I teach at Highland Park High School right now, all right? And I'm about to retire in June, and I've seen a lot of things go on, as you all have. But I'm telling you, this guy is the heart and soul of your school. To let him go, I think would be a big mistake, all right? I really think you should just try to really reconsider what's going on, and I know it's, you know, the budget, I understand budgeting very well, I own a business that I deal with with budgeting all the time, all right? This is the guy who is the heart and soul of your school. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sclafani.
Amy Levine, 2 Winbeam Court. Dr. Valesky, I just want to thank you for coming to our chamber meetings, it means a lot to have someone from the school district support, as we are a community. Mr. Juliana, I rewatched the video where you referred to handicapped students going to private schools. That is, I am extremely offended by that. As a parent of a young adult on the autism spectrum, I find this offensive, as well as you're, I hope you're listening to me, I see inferring that the out-of-district costs are burdensome on the budget. As mentioned before, my son, now 26, went out of district at 12 because East Brunswick just didn't have the supports anymore. Did we want him to go? No. All internal options were exhausted. I think Dr. Bowley, if I'm not mistaken, was the Assistant Principal at Chittick at the time. It was a nightmare. Our goal was to get him in residential setting at 21. Fortunately, there was an opening at Bancroft when he turned 17. Yes, Mr. Juliana, that is a private school, and yes, Mr. Juliana, the district paid for it, and yes, Mr. Juliana, it helped us as a young adult for him to be in a group home, to be in a community setting at the age of 26. We will be eternally grateful to the district for that. Friends and colleagues in town, ask me why I'm so passionate. in town, ask me why I'm so passionate about being one of Dr. Lou's cheerleaders since I no longer have kids in the district. Many think that Dr. Lou's responsibilities can be siphoned off to the directors. Think about that. Think about what Mr. Seltzer just said, what happened the past couple of days. What if there's an urgent matter with a special needs? Not handicapped, Mr. Giuliani, not handicapped. Are our kids being bullied with special needs? Is a director going to go and take away from their responsibilities and go help that? But what about everything else? Dr. Lou will be there in a heartbeat. What kind of morale are all these directors going to have without their fearless leader being there for them? Who will they have to go to? Dr. Valeski, you? What do you know about special ed? What do you know about bullying? I can only imagine how many times you have gone through due process and other litigation relating to parents of special ed students disagreeing with their IEPs, 504s, et cetera. And I can only imagine that the number of cases will be greater without Dr. Lou. Is that in your budget? What about all these special ed kids? I know people working in special ed now in the district, and it breaks my freaking heart that they don't have the support.
Three seconds.
They don't have the support they need.
Time.
Thank you, Mrs. Levine.
Good evening. Deborah Means, 18 Civic Center Drive.
I'm sorry, could you repeat your last name?
Means, M-E-A-N-S. I've lived in East Brunswick since the early 1960s. I attended the schools K through 12, graduated from the high school, as did my daughter. The teachers, coaches, and guidance counselor I had have athletic fields and buildings named for them. Dr. Figaroa is of that same caliber, but he is being let go. Dr. Figaroa has never met me, but I know so much about him and the impact he has had for our township and our children. Board members, you have been entrusted with the legacy of East Brunswick schools. We elect you to make the best decisions for our children, and I feel you have failed. I cried as I listened to the testimonials in Dr. Figaroa's support. Did any of you listen? You are tasked with representing the residents who elected you. Those same residents, students, parents, alumni, family members, all accounted for the lives he has improved and the lives he has saved. Is that not good enough for you? I too am a registered nurse, and I know that saving someone's life is priceless. These are the lives of our children and our future. Dr. Figaroa demonstrates integrity, selflessness, and humble service to our children and our community. He represents East Brunswick, the real East Brunswick that I know for more than 60 years. You say this is a painful, difficult decision. In reality, it's a senseless decision. You're compromising the legacy entrusted to you. Dr. Valeski, I also listened as you screamed at one of our residents last, at the community forum, a veteran at that. And I'm referring to the community forum, Community Budget Forum of April 24th at recorded time 57 minutes and 25 seconds. You yelled, "I am in public service, not a public servant." How can you say that? East Brunswick residents are all proud public servants. We watch out for our children, our most vulnerable, our seniors, and each other. We all work together to keep East Brunswick the safe, well-respected community that it is. That veteran never questioned or even mentioned your military service.
Ten seconds.
He talked of your job as a public servant. You owe him an apology. Dr. Figaroa, I thank you for everything that you've done. I wish the best for you and your family.
Time.
And thank you to all the others that are being let go as well. Thank you for your service.
Thank you, Mrs. Means.
Adam Altman, 3 Burlington Lane. So, the address on social media, statements have just been made. Some people have made some disparaging remarks, and I don't think it's appropriate, and I agree. However, facts have just been put out there, and they're meant to be there. So, we as members of the community know your job as board members is often thankless, and you are sacrificing your own time, friends, and family. We ask yourself, though, are you really looking at the budget objectively, looking for great options, for grants, redundancy? Are you being inquisitive about large school items? Have you recently looked at the fact that we paid 2.8 million to Branch and Banking Trust Company? May be completely necessary, but who are they? Have you asked, who are they? Have you asked, why are we paying them? What are we getting from them? We also pay about $100,000, which could be a teacher's salary, to a company called Univest, which seems to be just another financial consultant firm. Again, could be completely appropriate, but are we asking as board members, who are they? What are we paying them for? We also took out of the budget, we put $1 million for snow removal, right? Could we have done that in-house and kept employees on staff instead? And did we really get a million dollars' worth of snow removal in the last year or so? As we stated by the administration, every dollar counts. I ask that you vote yes for the budget only after you really ask the hard questions, after you know the true numbers. A district similar to East Brunswick's size and demographics has a budget of $170 million compared to our budget of $197 million. That is a $27 million difference. To add fuel to the fire, which I know is not what we want to do, the district has better state numbers, has higher rankings in niche, which I know some do not believe in, has higher ranking in U.S. News reports. Ask yourself, why are our costs so high? They may be legitimate, but you need to ask yourself as board members, are they legitimate? The community wants to believe you and trust you, but unfortunately, there's a veil of secrecy that seems to be among us, due to the lack of transparency. If you want the naysayers to go away, open up the veil of secrecy, stop being so internalizing it, and be more transparent, is all we ask of you. Thank you, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Altman. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to the board this evening?
Erin Jenkins, West Amherst Street.
Ma'am, can you use my pleasure of the microphone?
I'm 411. I'm close. Pretty much it. Thank you. Erin Jenkins, West Amherst Street. I'm going to start with Dr. Louis Figaroa. He is everything that East Brunswick Public Schools should be. Not only is he hands-on admin, he is also a parent. Unlike others that do not have children in the district, he has skin in the game. His actions are always in the best interest of our district. The gross injustice of eliminating him is beyond my comprehension. He is our Assistant Superintendent 24/7. Dr. Valeski and Mr. Giuliani, I see, according to LinkedIn, you both have, along with former other admin, thriving private businesses. I'm pretty sure you would not be able to say that you have never had to address these businesses while on the clock for our district. I made the same statement with Dr. Vanilla about double-dipping during schooltime. No one wants to answer that question either. When I came to the board meeting regarding my daughter's HIV, I was visibly upset at the end. Dr. Valeski, you walked over to me while I was talking to Lou. You had no idea who I was or who she was. Lou did. He knew everything, because that's who he is. He represents us. Last meeting, I said I felt my children were safe. With Lou out of that position, what's next? Are you going to come after the heads of security who tried to keep this district safe? Yesterday, EBHS was a prime example of how much we need security. I saw the multiple videos. They responded very quickly. I commend them. With the leadership of Lou, Paul, and Kevin, you have some very good men who go out of their way to establish relationships with children, students, so they can come to them. They often get pushed back from other staff in doing so, but they still want those kids to know they can trust them. My children trust the security. We are not known as a violent or suicidal district statistically, and thank God for that. I fear that will change as a result of these changes. You say it's not your fault, but it is your fault. It's your fault the budget has come to this. You depended on money that was not guaranteed. It's a gift. It's just as dumb as depending on a Christmas bonus. Years of wasted money have brought us here. Things you're trying, like shortening Fairview or graduation at EBHS, could have been done years ago to save money, as well as, I'm sure, multiple other things. You say it's a business. Yes, it is a business, one that has been run very poorly. This is your fault. Removing Lou will change that and all he handles. I hope we do not become a more violent district. I hope parents never have to bury a child. I am extremely glad my children will no longer be in this district if Lou is not here. Unfortunately, this is the reality of our kids' worlds, as yesterday demonstrated. When things go downhill, please know, that blood is on your hands. It is your fault. Thank you, Dr. Figaroa, for everything you have done.
Thank you, Mrs. Jenkins.
Good evening, members of the Board of Education. I'm sorry I'm late. I was busy running my wrestling practice. I am in the gym.
Just if you could start with your name and address.
Sorry, I am, right now. My name is Nicholas Cabrera. I am a resident of East Brunswick, living at 205 Fresh Ponds Road. My family and I moved here three years ago, drawn by the positive interactions we observed with school staff and administration. Many of my friends and family have actually lived in this town, and I grew up in Middlesex County over in Edison. I'm very familiar with East Brunswick and the quality of the education here. And I've been an educator for a decade. Impressed by the commitment to the quality programming, I left the tenured position to join Churchill as a special education teacher in January, working with some of the most challenging students in the district. The dedication of the Churchill staff, despite the constraints of educational bureaucracy, is nothing short of remarkable. However, I stand before you today deeply troubled by certain practices that have come to light since I became a resident of this town. Suspected issues of internal corruption, incompetence by upper management, opaque backdoor dealings are alarming and unacceptable. Our educators, security personnel, administrators at the building level, and support staff strive to do their utmost with the resources available to them. However, these resources are mismanaged. It was stated to me through a phone call made by the Board of Ed to the VFW that our superintendent is an Air Force veteran. Thank you for your service. I actually mean that. I would like to remind him that the Air Force Core values, integrity first, service before self, and excellence in all we do, should guide not only our personal lives, but also our professional and civic responsibilities. Even after service, the seven Army values, loyalty, duty, respect, selfless service, honor, integrity, and personal courage continue to be my guiding light and should be the cornerstone of a district's leadership decision-making process. It's important to note that many of the teachers have remained silent on these issues out of fear of reprisal. As a fellow educator and a firm believer of free speech, I feel it is both important and morally ethical to speak truth to power. We must foster an environment where our staff feels safe to express concerns without fear, ensuring their voices contribute
Ten seconds.
to positive change. Currently, the district faces an $8 million deficit, with forecasts suggesting further fiscal deterioration, as cited by the board in your last meeting.
Time.
I'll be posting this online and complete, and I'll also read it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Cabrera.
Marcus Ismar, 100 Fresh Ponds Road. There are six basic questions to ask when you're trying to solve a problem. They are the five W's and an H. We all remember that from school. The who tonight is Dr. Lou Figaroa. The what is Dr. Figaroa is being removed from a very important job. The where, unbelievably, this is occurring in our district. The when, tonight, unless the board does the right thing and votes no to this budget, or at least votes no to removing Dr. Figaroa. The how, Dr. Valeski is doing a reduction in force. We are losing people that are critical to our students, not just Dr. Lou. We are missing the why, and I'm sorry, I didn't hear the why in the superintendent report tonight. It didn't cover that. It just covered the social media. The why is not because state aid was reduced. It's not about money. The why is not that Dr. Figaroa did anything wrong. In fact, he excels in every measure. Lou moved his family here. He volunteers here. He's available 24/7 for the people here, and he still found time to complete his doctorate degree, to be part of our family here. The why is not that this doesn't have student impact. It has significant negative student impact and safety issues for years to come if you remove Lou. Is the why that Dr. Valeski has made it personal? Is it ego? No one has answered the why. And to the Board of Ed, read the room. Lou is part of the East Brunswick community. Victor Valeski is still an outsider. It appears tonight sounds like a vote of no confidence in the superintendent's decision to cut Lou. If the board votes tonight to remove Dr. Figaroa, the who becomes seven board members up here on the dais. The what is never forgetting what was done today by removing Lou. The when will be during the election this November and other election days after that. The where, it's going to be at our East Brunswick voting locations and voicing our opinions at future board meetings. The how, hopefully, we find new candidates that will do the right thing for our students and replace the current Board of Education. Why? I'll answer the why. Because this board is not, I repeat, is not listening to our residents. They are not representing the residents' requests, and is failing because the board is not ensuring the district is being run well. For the sake of our students, staff, residents, and visitors to our excellent school district, I implore you to do the right thing. Keep Dr. Lou Figaroa. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ismar.
Hi, Michael DeLucia, 28 Parker Street. I live in this district a long time, 73 years almost. Dr. Valeski, I don't really know you, but I did listen to the entire board meeting last time, and there was a couple of things that I heard, okay? One was the word redistricting pointed out to you and by some members of the board. I also heard some things that you just said today, that you do make recommendations to this board, but your recommendation, it's only one vote, okay? There are many members on this board, so when they were constantly blaming you for all these problems, okay? They should have been blaming the entire board at the same time, okay? Because you're only one person. You make a recommendation, okay? I know your job is hard, and as far as always hearing this thing about special education and special needs, okay? That number never goes away. And take it from one who knows, okay? My daughter's 38 years old, okay? Been out of district when she was in the school district as well, okay? I'm a very vocal person as well. So, I think some of the things that you cause your own problems, okay? Your three-minute rule. I watched people come to this microphone in past board meetings and be students and be cut off, okay? You want to listen to people? You got to do away with this three-minute rule. It's ridiculous, okay? It's never been around before, okay? And when I read the board minutes, I also saw that it's only been lately that it's been introduced, okay? So, use your head. People are talking on multimedia for one reason, because if they come up here, you're not going to listen to them. You only got three minutes. And if you can't say your piece in three minutes, that's it. And I've seen students argue. And when I was going to come here, I was going to say, I wanted to come and play beat the clock, because that's exactly what it sounds like, okay? You're a board of education. You need to turn around and start representing the people. As far as meetings, I've sat here in this building, okay, when Dr. Magistro addressed members of the different state legislature in the past, okay? And I've never seen meetings happen like that. You're saying, go back to the public and voice your concerns. Well, it's up to this board
Ten seconds.
to bring people in here and other legislators, okay? We're not Edison, and we're not Perth Amboy or Woodbridge, okay? That's where all the legislators are, not East Brunswick.
Thank you, Mrs. DeLucia.
Good evening. Jim Logan, 30 Myrtle Road, East Brunswick. Had the pleasure to speak to the board two weeks ago at the meeting, and just want to very quickly start by very quickly start by saying to Dr. Valeski, anyone that's ever put on the uniform and served the country should never feel that they have to be in a position to justify that. So I think it's very unfortunate that you had to comment on that, and thank you for your service to our country. Having said that, I asked an open-ended question two weeks ago, and I said, are we potentially taking a bad situation that we all find ourselves in and making it significantly worse? And as I reflect on all the different things and side conversations that have happened over the last two weeks, I have to wonder, what has been the dialogue? How have we not found an ability in other areas of potential funding to cut to make this situation not graduate to a much worse situation? And it certainly seems that that's the path we're going down, whether it's a baked decision already or not. Obviously, it's unfortunate if it is. And I don't think people are being gratuitous or embellishing. When you hear the people that have stood here over the last several meetings and talked about the lives that that man has saved, that is not passion or embellishment or people being gratuitous. Those are facts. Those are facts. And we're talking about an individual that has saved students' lives. There's got to be other areas that we can find the money from in order to protect the position and the integrity and the quality that he brings to the children of this district. And with the rest of my time, as I said last time, I'm a personal friend of Lou, so I don't call him Dr. Figaroa. I call him Lou, because that's the kind of stand-up gentleman that he is. And before I finish, I'd like to also acknowledge what I said two weeks ago. It's unfortunate that there are 29 other people losing their jobs. Those are families. Those are people. Those are incomes. It's a very unfortunate situation. I've been there myself in the past, so I can empathize. But we all know that life is not fair. And so with my last commentary, I'll actually address your lovely family and just say, be proud of that man, and remember how many people love and respect him. And no matter what happens here tonight, no one can change that. God bless you, Lou.
Thank you, Mr. Logan. Go ahead.
Good evening, Jeff Winston, Fresh Ponds Road. The words of the superintendent, I think he needs to hear this. These are quotes. "We did everything humanly possible to avoid cutting staff and impacting students. We did things with insurance. We did things with energy. We did preschool. We did everything humanly possible to avoid." You've heard me. And the superintendent said back in 2021, the presentation back then said, "This year, we won't be able to do it. This was forecasted. We saw it coming," the superintendent said. "We've been planning for this. When we get to that year, we'll be able to manage the budget with minimal impact as possible." You went on to, the superintendent went on to say, "The reality, this is pain. This is staffing impact right now for the last two weeks, what we've been doing." You talked, the superintendent talked about the miserable existence. This has been a miserable existence. "I feel horrible," quoted, "for the teachers and staff. I feel horrible for administrators delivering the news. The worst," the superintendent said. The superintendent went on to say that "this is Teacher and Staff Appreciation Week. No one is feeling appreciated right now. No one is walking around saying, yay, you can buy the donuts. You can't hear the nice things, but really, what they're saying is, don't fire my friend." These are the words of the superintendent, but not that one, the one from South Brunswick. This is the way the South Brunswick superintendent addresses people, not standing up on the stage with your tears and saying, "How sad it is for you. You spent the first couple of minutes doing it this week. Ms. Lax, you did it last week. Let's go around the table. Lou, what's sad for you?" The rest of the Board, you sit here. Half of you aren't looking. You're in outer space. Two weeks ago, I listened to Dr. Figaroa, an honored member of this district. I don't know what he did wrong. I asked him. I said, "What did you do wrong?" Did I ask you that, Lou? What did you do wrong to deserve this? I asked him to explain to me how the highest-quality assistant superintendent is kicked out while the lowest-quality superintendent is rewarded. Explain it to me, Lou. You still haven't, and I'll come back for that answer. The rest of the Board, you sit there and you say nothing? These two people next to me pour their hearts out, and you sit on your hands and stare out into space as one of them's doing right there and do nothing? You don't put your hands together for a standing ovation for a family that's going through pain? One of our own in the district that you paid for how many years, Lou? 12?
10 seconds.
I don't need it.
Thank you, Mr. Winston. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to the Board this evening?
Michael Mestruzo, 27 Colonial Drive.
Please repeat your name.
Michael Mestruzo.
Thank you.
A few weeks ago, I, along with others, provided both a character reference as well as a rationale for why Dr. Lou Figaroa should not be removed from the very important position he holds within this school system. What is unfortunate about this is that despite the outpouring support that this community gave, his reinstatement is still not a topic of consideration by the Board. As representatives of the community, some of which are elected by us citizens of the community, it is expected that those whom we elect serve in the interest of what the community wants. I thought it was very clear, very clear, that Dr. Lou Figaroa was needed by the community in the position that he currently holds. So now I, and many others, might be very clear that if the community is not heard yet again, and there is not a plan for the reinstatement of Dr. Lou Figaroa, the community might not forget when it's time again to cast their ballot. In short, responsibility also bears accountability. I'm confident that you will find a way to make a decision that truly serves our school community. Lou, we appreciate all that you have done for our school, our community, and most of all, our kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mestruzo.
Jack Blalock, 37 Hillstone Road. I didn't plan on coming up and speak tonight. A couple of weeks back, I addressed you all in a call for just transparency and saying, "Look, we know that when jobs get cut, jobs need to be reallocated." I feel the need at this point to talk about Dr. Figaroa. We've heard so much about the character of the man and the lives that he's touched. We still don't have answers about the many hats that he wears and where those responsibilities are going to fall. I just ask you to consider that you might find a way to divvy up those tasks and reassign those roles. But are you going to find a way to replace the man that had those connections and built those relationships? Someone that could come into an emergency situation like we had here at East Brunswick High School yesterday? Who is able to speak to the students, allocate responsibilities, take control of the situation? All right? As was said earlier, we might take a director's position, maybe another supervisor, and say, "Now this is your responsibility, and you're going to take over that role." But do they have the experience? Do they have the training? Do they have the required certifications to carry out the roles that he has done so amazingly well over the last 12 or so years? It's easy to try and take away the responsibilities and reallocate them, but can you actually replace the man? And I think the answer has universally been, we have serious concerns about that. With the time that I have left, I need to talk about someone else, someone I've come to know and respect tremendously over the last couple of years. Jamie Kennard has been one of our supervisors for special programs at East Brunswick High School. On a personal level, I can say that she has helped tremendously my daughter, who is now a junior in high school, who is on track to graduate with her associate's degree when she graduates high school next June. That would not have been possible without her direct one-on-one assistance that she's provided her in the guidance along the way. Jamie Kennard works with some of our most high-risk students, students who otherwise might not have a chance of graduating, students who otherwise, as has been mentioned, might have to be sent out of district for special placement and special resources. How much would that cost? Jamie Kennard, thank you for all that you've done. I know we've spoken so much about the great man up on stage, Dr. Figaroa. I don't want you to be lost in the sauce. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blalock.
Danielle Vietto, 23 Bradford Road. So in regards to social media, I get it. I run one of the parent groups, and I understand it's, it can get overwhelming, but we are confused. We are at a loss, and we don't know where to get information because we can't engage in a dialogue here, and we email, and we can't get emails. We tag, and we can't get responses because of laws and legality, so we don't know what to do, so we talk to each other. So here's my message to you. We know we aren't the only district struggling to find ways to keep jobs, but over the past few weeks, we've been flooded with questions, leaving us feeling overwhelmed and at a loss for understanding. As a society, our teachers are struggling, and as parents, we grapple with the same challenges. It's disheartening to witness the apparent disconnect between our community's needs and the responses we receive. It's evident that when we voice our concerns, they aren't listened to, so what recourse are we left with? We recognize that in the past, there may have been some sense of compliance within our community. However, times have changed. There's a growing level of mistrust in the current leadership and rumors abound. Without avenues to engage directly with the Board members, we're left to speculate and search for answers on our own. We're awake, and we want accountability. We expect that those appointed and elected to serve in leadership roles to do so with integrity and compassion. We need reassurance that our concerns are heard and addressed and that decisions are made transparently and with the best interests of our children in mind. So our call to action is to urge you to bridge the gap between the community and the Board, to foster open dialogue, to create avenues for meaningful engagement, and to remember why you ran for office. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vietto. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to the Board?
My name is Karen Ellingson Nonistide, 26 Maple Street. I think this will be a little repetitive, but I did want to add my voice. And I'm just reading an email that I had sent to all of you. I'm speaking in support of Dr. Louis Figaroa, Louis Figaroa, in the hope that you will reconsider the elimination of his position. Knowing that my time is limited, I'll try and keep this brief, as I tried in my email, but didn't really succeed. As an educator myself, although not in East Brunswick, and as a community member and parent, I understand very well that you all have an extremely difficult job to do to balance the budget as well as maintain a high level of educational services to this community. I have been very impressed with nearly every aspect of my children's education since my daughter started school in the district more than 10 years ago at Bow Monroe. At every level, school and, at every level, school and district staff work hard. There is no doubt that that is true. As a fellow parent and East Brunswick teacher who just spoke, said at the April Budget Forum, and I remembered what he said, and wholeheartedly agree, "It's a hard-working district, top to bottom." With that being said, I do not think it is fair to sacrifice the job of one of the hardest working and most valuable members of your team for the sake of a balanced budget. To quote from another community member who posted on social media, sorry, "Dr. Figaroa has been an asset to the town, to the school district and town for numerous years. He ensures that all individuals are supported and that the district is equitable. Dr. Figaroa has attended numerous district events and has shown his support and commitment to our children. I have heard students, staff, and parents comment on their approval of his work, ethic, professionalism, and positive demeanor." I'm sure someone who's here tonight wrote that. I'm just quoting her. "I wholeheartedly agree with these statements and have observed for myself the value that Dr. Figaro adds to the district as a high-level employee and as a community member. While I understand that employees of the district are not required to be East Brunswick residents, it is extremely valuable to have at least one high-ranking employee onboard who is invested in the community in the way that only a resident of the town can be. I think this is a key factor to consider in this whole situation." From what you indicated in, at the Budget Forum, Dr. Valeski, "The responsibilities that coincide with Dr. Figaro's position will be delegated throughout the district, which no doubt means that demands on other administrators and staff will be overwhelming, creating inconsistency and a lot of problems in the areas that the assistant superintendent is responsible for overseeing. I don't see how this is a realistic solution, and I worry that major problems will be created in these key areas." As I stated previously, I am truly understanding of the difficulties you are facing in deciding what to cut, and also profoundly thankful that you were able to at least temporarily save the elementary music program, which both my children are part of. Let me skip down to the bottom here. Can I finish?
Time.
Okay. Thank you. Please reconsider, reconsider what you're thinking of.
Good evening, Aram Shakir, 8 Lantern Lane, East Brunswick. I'd like to first start by expressing my gratitude towards all of you for your hard work and dedication to our district. With that being said, a critical part of your job as a Board of Education member is to listen to all the feedback from parents, staff, and students, and use that feedback when you vote on such matters. Never before have I ever encountered such an overwhelming outpouring of heartfelt tributes towards an individual, and I think you guys all agree to that. Each and every testimonial has been deeply moving, and I sincerely hope that these accounts have been deeply resonated with all of you. It is evident that he has had a profound impact on lives of many. Folks have been pouring in and making a legit effort, taking time out of their busy lives to advocate for that man, and I'm astonished that his role is still being considered for elimination. Many of you on the Board are familiar with Dr. Lou and are aware of his exceptional qualities. The fact that he has garnered support from so many individuals speak volume about his professionalism and kind nature. It is a true testament to his character. It is also evident that we already have somebody who is successfully managing multiple critical roles such as security, counseling, athletics, and special education, and cutting him would be wrong, reckless, and a huge injustice to our children, especially mine. Your decision of eliminating his role would be a huge disservice to our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shakir.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Maggie Georges. I'm at 34 Garfield. Thank you to all those, thank you to all those who are losing their jobs. I am sincerely sorry that this is the current situation that we are in. However, my question is, moving forward, how do we prevent this? This is a big problem, because the state is set up in a way that it's meant to take from the richer communities to provide to the poorer communities. It's a democratic approach. It's what we voted for in New Jersey. And we might agree or disagree, but it's what also makes education great in the United States, is because everyone has an opportunity to a great quality education. Now, realistically, emails to the state won't do anything. I really thought about this a lot. I sent the email advocating for funds, but realistically, the formula will not change. The state knew exactly what they were doing when they changed the formula or when they fully implemented the formula. So now, why are emails not being sent to the township? The township needs to bring up the money, needs to fork up this money. The state took away from townships like East Brunswick to provide to Camden and Trenton and Newark because their towns, their cities, don't have money, okay? It makes sense. Realistically, we can't ask for that money back, because towns like Newark and Camden and Trenton, they don't have their townships to back up. It's low income. East Brunswick has money. Why are we not getting money from the mayor? Where is the mayor in all of this? Where is Mayor Kohan? This is an election year. Our schools are going down. We don't want to increase taxes, and we don't want to come next year where we have less money from the state. money from the state. Okay? Where is Mayor Kohan? Why are emails not being organized to the township? So I kindly ask if, if, what can we do with the township without raising our taxes? Currently, Route 18 has all these lights that are being replaced. I think that could be put on hold for a little bit and more money could come to the township. Where's the pilot money? Why is the pilot money not coming to the board? Our schools need to retain quality and as, I'm so sorry, Dr. Figueroa, about your job, but my heart also breaks for the other 28 people. Truly, everyone's job is important and I hope next year we're not losing other jobs. I'm really worried. So how can we talk to the township? What is the relationship between the board and the township about the money? So I really appreciate your time and I wish you all the best during this, this hardship. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Georges. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to the board? Okay, I just don't want to close the public portion without anyone getting to speak.
Jennifer Figueroa, 101 Rus Lane. I ask, if you work virtually from home, why did you ask Lou to be in charge of the district 119 times in the past two years? Yes, I've been counting. Now let's address the hostile work environment you've created, the way you speak to people, especially women, and now you have one of your cronies heading up HR doing your dirty work. Lou and his team are the only ones that have, that would stand up for what's right. Let's not hide behind your smoke and mirrors of numbers. With only $1.3 million loss from the state, you are, you still are in crisis. You think we're stupid. So a struggling business chooses to remove the person who brings wealth and success? That sounds like a poor business model to me. Removing Lou is just another one of your scare tactics to keep people in fear of you, but you may have gotten a little too greedy this time. You may have misjudged the situation and the power of the people in this town. I think you have started a revolt. We'll be coming after those who have allowed this to go on in November and then we'll be coming after your job. It's time that you be held accountable for a slowly failing district. You saw the numbers on the petition, over 800 and growing, and that's just in the last 48 hours, and that was just from the people who don't fear you, those who don't need to worry about your revenge and backlash. But behind closed doors, anything can happen. You know all about that, don't you? You want to hide behind the budget and use it as an excuse, but we know the decision you made regarding Lou was personal. Let's make this personal then. Lou is not being let go due to a budget crisis. He's being fired because he stands up for what he believes in and can't be paid off. But I don't know if anyone has thought about this. The Figueroas just don't go away after this board votes. We live in town, we're part of this community, and we will continue to speak up for what's right and for the kids of East Brunswick. When I think about all that, the recent events and all the knowledge that has come to surface regarding many sitting up there tonight, I think it's despicable. Maybe a Figueroa and Figueroa Board of Education ticket in November would be in order. Hey, I may even convince Lou to run for mayor. Some of you are asking, does he have any experience in politics? No, he doesn't. But Victor doesn't have any experience in education. He's never stepped foot in a classroom as a teacher, never stepped foot in a building as a principal, even an assistant principal, and yet the board has hired him as our Assistant Superintendent of Schools and has continued to renew his contract. His background is in business and finance. Business and finance. Maybe that's the person, the assistant, a superintendent of business and operations that he should be getting rid of, that, that would have the least impact on students. When the directors of the finance department have a problem, they can filter up to Victor, just like he said Dr. Figueroa's people would do. He should be able to answer those questions, those types of questions, right? But doesn't sound like he's been doing a good job at that either. With your decision to not rehire Lou, you're just trying to make a point, flex your muscle, and cover up your dark financial secrets. Let's, let your vote tonight represent the voice of the people.
Thank you, Mrs. Figueroa. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to the board this evening? Okay.
Doreen Sislak, 8 Birch Hill Road.
Could you repeat your name, Doreen?
Doreen Sislak.
Thank you.
Dr. Figueroa and Ms., and Mr. Natalechi, I want to acknowledge your prompt and safe handling of the situation at the high school, being there shortly after the incident started. Dr. Valeski, you responded almost three and a half hours in, after the incident. When I last spoke, I discussed previously and curiously about our 24/7 crisis response plan. I know there's a flow chart, but what is our actual 24/7 plan? Particularly when Dr. Figueroa is no longer in the district. I would appreciate if you could provide me more information about the vendors and the bids that East Brunswick has accepted. It seems that these vendors are most selected without a competitive bidding process. Could you shed some light on these times for me? On April 25th, how did we pass a 2.8 million expenditure on a new RTU system at the high school without an open discussion or floor vote? Why do we need a new RTU system and many vendors provide bids for the system? How many? Dr. Valeski, you have stated numerous times that our school district is a business. Again, that is your educational background and experience. It's that, it's business. This is a home and a community. Mr. Juliant, it was stated that you did not self-appoint yourself as Assistant Superintendent of Schools. However, the public is still unclear how you received this position. You get a new title and suddenly there is no room for you, Lou. Sorry. Hammerhill educators had to take a salary decrease due to the renaming of a school from middle school to elementary school. As a parent, when I was asked to vote, I thought it was just in fun. Did we know that our teachers took an $8,000 pay cut because we changed the name of the school? As an educator, I'm furious. These highly qualified teachers are impacted by your lack of transparency. This leads me to my next question. What qualifications do you make as an Assistant Superintendent? With these qualifications in mind, why Dr. Figueroa? Why the most honest, committed, transparent person? The person that would speak up against questionable practices? Is there more going on that the district needs to be made aware of, which we have been in the past few days? My children and their friends are heartbroken about you, what you're doing to our community. Lou is their savior and their role model. Yes, they're aware of what is happening because they trust us. Therefore, we must be their protectors and be transparent in this, as we expected from you. I think that you should have school assemblies and tell these children yourselves that Lou is not coming back because when he doesn't show up at a school event, sporting event, or anywhere else, who's going to tell them? Their teachers? Their parents? Because they will notice he is not here and somebody needs to be accountable, and it's not me. In two days, you have raised over a thousand, almost a thousand supporters for Lou. When I went back and I checked on elections, some of you received just over 4,000 votes, and that took you a lot of voting rights.
Ten seconds.
Some of you received just about a thousand. Think about it, Lou. A thousand votes in two days. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sislak. Is there anyone else that wants to speak to the board? I don't want to shut it down. Unless everyone's got their chance. No? Okay. All right, I'm going to close the public portion then. Move on to our Board of Education items. I would like to ask for a nomination to appoint the board member to our first vacancy on the board. Can I have a, oh, I'm so sorry. Mr. Hong.
Yes, I, I'd like to nominate Dr. James, Heather James, for the, one of the board of two vacancies.
Okay, do I have a second for that?
I'll second that.
Okay, second by Mr. Herrick. Uh, I'm, do I ask for, is there any other nominations? Okay, then I'm going to close the nominations for this vote and I'm going to ask the secretary to please call the roll for Ms. Dr. James.
This is a roll call vote for Dr. Heather James. Mrs. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Cummings?
Yes.
Ms. Gwos?
Yes.
Mrs. Herrick?
Yes.
Mr. Hong?
Yes.
Mrs. Reese?
Yes.
President Lax?
Yes. Motion carries. Congratulations to Dr. James for the second board vacancy. Do I have a nomination for someone to fill this second? Uh, Mrs. Gwos?
I'd like to nominate Pankaj Gazwami.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Reese. Any discussion?
Other nominations.
Are there any other nominations from the floor for the second seat? Okay, seeing none, I will close the nominations and ask the secretary to again, please call the roll for Mr. Pankaj Gazwami.
Mrs. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Cummings?
Yes.
Ms. Gwos?
Yes.
Mrs. Herrick?
Yes.
Mr. Hong?
Yes.
Mrs. Reese?
Yes.
President Lax?
Yes, motion carries. Congratulations to Mr. Gazwami. I am going to ask for a motion to combine this evening's items on tonight's agenda with the exception of Financial Services Item Number Three. May I please have a motion?
Moved by Mrs. Becker?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Gwos. Is there any discussion? Okay, will the secretary please call the roll?
Mrs. Becker? Mr. Cummings?
Yes.
Ms. Gwos?
Yes.
Mrs. Herrick?
Yes.
Mr. Hong?
Yes.
Mrs. Reese?
Yes.
President Lax?
Yes, motion carries. I am now going to ask for a motion for Financial Services Item Number Three. Is that Mrs. Becker? Quiet, I think your mic's on. Mrs. Becker, is there a second?
So, I said, so...
So, yes, I heard, yes. Sorry, I didn't hear. Moved by Mrs. Becker, second by Mrs. Gwos. As far as discussion, um, I'm actually going to read a statement on behalf of the entire board. As we embarked in the process of crafting our budget for the 2024-2025 fiscal year, we were confronted with significant challenges that demand our careful attention and prudent decision-making. Working collaboratively with district administration, our charge was to maintain the highest possible standards that our community expects and deserves. To that end, we carefully assessed every aspect of how we continue to deliver high-quality and rigorous education, how we restructure our administrative functions, how we economize our financial commitments, and how we maintain our operational needs. As we navigated these complex decisions, we recognized that difficult choices had to be made. We will continue to advocate for change at the legislative level and gather input to make informed decisions that prioritize the best interests of our staff and students and the long-term sustainability, long-term sustainability of our district. I'm going to ask the secretary to please call the roll.
Mrs. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Cummings?
Yes.
Ms. Gwos?
Yes.
Mrs. Herrick?
Yes.
Mr. Hong?
Yes.
Mrs. Reese?
Yes.
President Lax?
Yes, motion carries. I'm going to entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved by Mrs. Becker, second by Mrs. Gwos. All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions, motion carries. Thank you for everyone for coming out this evening. Have a good night.